Good morning, everyone.
Okay, if we could kinda get things organized, we'll get started here.
Mary Christles, welcome to this December fifteenth Board Supervisors Meeting. I called to order at this time and asked Mr. Slay if he'd be gracious enough to do the invocation again.
We're glad to, let's pray. Lord, we pause now, at this time of year, Lord, our minds and our hearts are tuned in, Father, to this celebration that we celebrate every year, Father, the arrival of the child who became our sacrifice. Father, I praise you for what you have done for us, the grace and the mercy that you have shown us, the demonstration of your love for us, Lord, and we don't deserve it, and Father, we don't want to take for granted that grace that you showed to us. Lord, as we consider how gracious you've been toward us, let us be encouraged today to use all of the talent, skills, and abilities that you've given to us, to use those, Father, for best interest of our citizens. Lord, to look to their interests before we look to their own, to our own, Father, to consider them more important than we consider ourselves. Father, it's a wonderful privilege to serve your fellow man, and I just pray, Father, today that we will, that we'll be found capable and wise in our decisions. Give us the discernment we need today in Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you, that was very fulfilling, covered it all. Well, seriously, we get wrapped up in the moment and we forget what we're really, it's really about. All right, next we have public comment, recognition, of comments, first would be Risk Management Department.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Paul.
What we're here today is to talk about the renewal for the workers' compensation, kind of January one, and Paul's handing out the little booklets and more reading material. The second page just shows the companies that we approached in order to look at it, to see if anyone could be competitive against the company we have you with, which is Mississippi Public Entity Fund. And not very many companies want to take on the responsibility of the county because we got the street and roads as well as the law enforcement. And most of them are scared of the law enforcement, you know, with the pursuits and things going that way. Mississippi Public Entity has been really good, it's kept the rates very consistent, even though this year, the past year, we've had a few claims that's hit, but they didn't go up a lot on the rates. But the main thing to look at here is on the third page, where the manual premium is, and then right under that is all of the credits that they apply to your account, which is about, what is it, Paul, fifty-nine percent?
Fifty-nine percent off of the manual premium.
And nobody else could touch that, I can promise you. Now, the thing that is concerning is it is a self-insured fund, but we definitely did our due diligence checking it out. Paul, I'll let you tell about what all you've done on that.
One thing that we do is we wanna make sure that if we have to go into a self-insured pooling arrangement, that that pooling arrangement has surplus to be able to pay claims and not, you know, adversely affect the county. And this is one of the situations where this pool's been a business for a long time. And I've gotten the audit of financial statements from them, I've called the Mississippi Workers' Comp Commission, which regulates self-insured funds, and also I even talked to their accountant. I do that every year in that situation, just to make sure, and this pool has got tens of millions of dollars in surplus, and the Workers' Comp Commission feels very comfortable with them, they're still doing a good job, and the accountant said they're doing a good job. So, we checked it out from that same point, about as much as we can from that same point, they're still doing a good job from that same point.
And one of the things, when Paul got all this together, that kinda stuck out to me, and I just wanted to point it out because I think it's, it's a good point to look at because, you know, the county's been growing, and workers' compensation is strictly based off payroll. Well, oh, is it the very last page, Paul?
Which one do you mean?
Yeah.
It's gonna be the next to the last.
Next to the last page, the one with all the blue. You can tell where we started, which really, we got involved with you guys about 'oh-seven. But going forward, each year, your payroll has increased.
Right.
But if you'll flip back, one page, it compares the premium cost, well, now that's what I wanna look at.
This is the one we're looking at, right? This graph actually shows premiums versus one year each year. And then the red is the premium, and then the blue is the claims cost. And as you can see, going all the way back to 'oh-four, you're paying four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, and it's kinda steadily decreasing from where we're at now, where we can't get any more credit, we can't squeeze any more blood out of their earnings, so to speak, and we've gotten all we can. We're actually fifty-nine percent off of their manual premium, and that's pretty good.
So, we're seeing the premiums that you've paid compared to the payrolls that has increased throughout the years. It's gonna be hard for anybody to take, take your work comp over from Mississippi Public Entity.
Sound like a plan to me? Precisely, nobody's supposed to quote it.
Twenty-four, the percentage for workers' comp based off your payroll is three-point-nine percent, and now it's one-point-five-two percent. So, no, lots gone down in price since that, but at least that's one thing that...
Y'all got any questions about any part of it?
No, this graph, for me, is pretty clear.
How did we make the claims cost such a small figure from, really, up until last year? I mean, we were two-thousand-ten.
Yeah. We've had some claims activity this year, and we've had it in police, and we've had it in street and roads, so, you know, we've just had an active year in claims. It's one of the things where some of these things, you can't risk control. One situation was a man that hurt his neck driving the truck.
A dump truck?
Yeah.
Freakish kinda deal. I think what you were asking is how do you got them under control from like back in, well, having quality people, you know, and being important to the share, being important to your street and road managers and...
But sometimes you're just gonna have that year.
Right.
And on this page, where it starts with this chart, this is after charting numbers for each policy year, and on this page right here, it shows all your claims that are over ten-thousand dollars, any current value. The ones that are highlighted in yellow are actually ones that are still open.
And, gentlemen, because it does have names, it could be a HIPAA violation, if y'all would please, after the meeting, let us have those folders back.
Sure.
And I do have this under my section for approval.
Okay.
But that just kinda lets you know the departments, where they're coming from.
Good job, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Butler Snow, we have Steve Eds, and we have Elizabeth Clark instead of Sue Fairbank. I wanna make sure they knew you weren't Sue.
Mr. Morrison, it may be good to get Lynn up here at the same time, if that's okay.
Lynn, okay. Yeah, Lynn, yes.
You know, over a number of months, we've had conversations with Mr. Slay and with some of you about putting yourself in a position to issue bonds, to finance your new courthouse and your detention facility for your misdemeanor. And what we have drafted in accordance with those conversations are two resolutions. One is your intent to issue up to twenty-five million dollars in bonds that can be done in three ways. So, we're giving you the option to do that in three different ways. One is to just issue GOs of the county that would be sold on a competitive basis. The second way would be to issue eight twenty-five million dollar bond to be sold to the Mississippi Development Bank. By doing that, you give yourselves some flexibility that you don't have by just selling it competitively. You can structure it in different ways, you can capitalize interest, and it oftentimes allows you to do things that benefit you and allow you to issue more bonds, and Lynn will take your debt portfolio and structure it in such a way that it's beneficial to you. So, that's probably the way that Lynn will recommend doing this. The third way would be to enter into a loan with the Mississippi Development Authority, I mean, the Mississippi Development Bank, I'm sorry, for the twenty-five million dollars. By doing it that way, it does not count against your debt capacity. So, the resolution allows you to do it any of those three ways, and you would make that decision down the road when you get closer to deciding that you're going to do this. Now, this resolution doesn't bind you to do it, it just puts you in a position of doing it once you decide you're gonna proceed with the project. The statute requires that if you adopt a resolution today, that we publish it for four times, and if fifteen-hundred or twenty percent of your voters object to it, then you would have to have an election on whether you were going to issue the bonds, and sixty percent of your voters would at that point have to approve the issuance of the bonds. It would be published beginning, I think, I think we think, begin next Thursday, I think, and if we would then come back to your meeting on January the seventeenth, and assuming there was not an objection, then we would adopt a resolution indicating there was no objection, and you would then be able to issue the bonds under the statute for two years from January the seventeenth. The second resolution just employs the professionals, it employs Elizabeth and myself, it employs Lynn, it employs Craig, to actually do the transaction. So, that's the resolutions that we have. I'm sure you have some questions for Lynn about the interest rate market today, so we'll let him get up here and answer those sort of questions.
Well, you know, the rates have gone up. The ten-year today is about two-sixty, in the two-sixty range, even though they've gone up a little bit since the election, they were about a one-seventy-five, one-eighty prior to the election. The rates are still much better today than they were two terms ago. I mean, we were, these are still very good rates. We, in our projections on the bond issue, we can do it within your tax levies. The Development Bank does give you a lot of flexibility that I think we'll need to achieve the goals that we set out here. But, and just kind of where what happened, this last week, I sold a taxable fifteen-year deal, a taxable fifteen-year deal for four percent, so we still anticipate getting good rates.
If we do this today, do we have to decide which way we wanna go?
No.
Okay.
You only decide that sometime after the seventeenth of January.
Okay, that's, I'd like to kinda look at the different avenues there.
I mean, I think Lynn will come back at some point after, I would think after you've advertised and accepted bids would probably be both our recommendations.
Right.
That you, at that point, then decide how you're going to proceed, and which of the three options are in your best interest.
Okay.
Other than the vote today to post it out, anything else we should be doing? What I'm concerned is, is who knows where the market, where the market's going, you know, obviously, you know, and I just wanna sit here waiting around, if we should be doing something, say, if we need to pull the trigger on the seventeenth to pull it, then we need to be prepared to do it, you know, I'm just, you know, market's gonna, you know, well, you seen it, you know, but...
When is the opening of the bids?
Thirty-first.
Oh, okay.
But I feel confident between the time we get through with the Chancery Building, if we're committed to go ahead and build the detention center, that twenty-five million's gonna, we're gonna use that twenty-five million for both. And if it was just one, I'd be more hesitant, maybe, to say, be something maybe different, but unless the board feels differently about the detention center, I don't, you know, I'd go ahead and move to the full twenty-five, but that's, we can decide on the seventeenth. But I just wanna get us, call us waiting, if it's something that this board needs to be doing to be able to pull that trigger if we think the rates are getting ready to do something, you know, beneficial to us to...
We really can't pull it, though, after you have the...
We gotta, they're not talking about the seventeenth, though.
Right, I think we can be ready.
I don't want to get to the seventeenth to find out, well, we should've done this last week, and now we gotta wait another week, you know, you keep putting it off, not putting it off, but we just be ready to make a move when we, when y'all recommend, we need to make a move.
Well, I think we can be ready by the seventeenth.
That's what I was asking, that's what, what we need to do.
If you're ready by the seventeenth, then we could go ahead on the seventeenth and approve issuance of the bonds, and we could go ahead and adopt a resolution, you know, authorizing the sale of the bonds. We often do that, if you're comfortable that you're going to need the entire twenty-five million. I mean, what we would not wanna do is put ourselves in a position of issuing twenty-five million when you only need twenty-three million.
Oh, we can find somewhere to put the number two.
I mean, the other decision you have to make by that point is, I mean, we, I think we both strong, the three of us strongly feel like you probably need to go through the Mississippi Development Bank, and by doing that, you'd have to select an investment banker to sell those bonds, so that's a decision you need to make when you have the seventeen bonds.
Right. Well, maybe we need to revisit this work session.
Yes, I was reminding folks today in the hall that my nickname is the Wet Blanket, so, let me, let me do what I do best, and that's to remind us that there could be an objection that qualifies under the statute that's lodged, and if that happens, then we have a significant issue in protocol that could interrupt all of the progress.
But we could still be ready, either way, assuming, I don't really...
You should...
Yeah.
...underway, with the assumption being that there will not be involvement.
Yeah, and I would think we, that's what we'd wanna look at, I would think, be ready.
They advertise twenty-five million, and they will make a decision prior to, like, brothers consecutively, they will make the same...
They advertise, say, up to...
Up to twenty-five million.
All right.
We have to do it in three consecutive weeks.
Four consecutive weeks. And we're happy to go ahead and do everything to get ready on the seventeenth, and if there's an objection, then we just kinda back off and you gotta schedule a...
I think, I think we're here word, you know, part first of January, if there's gonna be one, I mean, you'll, it's not gonna be a secret, anybody can put that together and show up on the seventeenth without us knowing about it.
We just kinda need to know around the first of January that that's what you wanna do, because we have a lot of documentation that we have to do to get ready for the seventeenth.
You'll have that.
It's also a little more, it's not just one objection, I wasn't intending to scare the market, but...
And lower qualifying here, the qualifying is up, is twenty percent or fifteen hundred, whichever is greater, they gotta present a petition and have to qualify, but at least fifteen, for our purposes, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred. And Laura, even, because she has a lot of work to do to help us.
Well, we know what we need to do, and so we can be working toward that, and then we, I think we need you all to come back, I'm sure you would...
Sure.
Yes.
Just let us know when.
Answer any questions.
Thank y'all.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
We're ready.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Hope y'all have a wonderful holiday.
You too, thank y'all.
Do you need us to stay for the adoption of the resolutions?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
I don't think so, I don't know.
Great, thank you.
Unless you just wanna make sure we need it done.
Craig, you said fifteen hundred or twenty percent of the population?
Whichever. Of your registered vote, registered, whichever is the...
How many registered voters do we have?
Eighty-seven thousand plus.
Okay.
So, it's the fifteen hundred numbers that we need to pay attention to, it has to be fifteen hundred to qualify, like, for...
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve old business?
So moved.
Most approve, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Bishop. All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Send agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion approved, send agenda by Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we're missing Mr. John Sullivan.
Pretend to be John today. We have petitions for change of assessment on 2016 real property assessment roll.
So moved.
Second.
Most approve, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Petitions to adjust the 2016 home state exemption supplemental roll.
So moved.
Most approve, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
See, approval to publish once in January and once in February at a cost in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty dollars per run in the Rankin County News, an advertisement to prompt taxpayers to file home state exemptions before April first, 2017. The deadline is always twenty-seven, April first for the home state exemption, this year falls on a Saturday, Saturday or Sunday, and the state has said that they have to be in before the first, they cannot take them on the third, and that's why he wants to advertise twice, to let the public know.
I see.
So moved.
All right, motion approved, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Authority to issue check to the U.S. Postal Service in the amount of ninety-six-hundred dollars for the 2016 home state exemption mail-out renewal cards, and to replenish the business reply account for the Tax Assessor's Office, and authority to issue check in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars to the, for the renewal of permit number forty-four.
So moved.
Most approve, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bridget Herring.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item, this morning, I'm requesting approval of a copier contract with Rico for the Sheriff's Department shop.
So moved.
Most approve, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Parker.
Craig, while Mr. Parker makes his way, my elementary math says twenty percent of eighty-seven thousand is more than fifteen hundred.
That's right, so you deal with the lesser number.
I thought y'all said the greater.
I thought you said greater, too.
You said greater. Okay, okay.
That's mistake number two, right?
Yes.
Okay, just keep in mind.
Look, but the year's almost out, he's gonna make it, maybe.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Morning.
Good morning, Bridget.
Thank you.
How many, Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Well, I mean, it was so slow moving there, I wasn't sure if she...
I understand, she does move slow, but that's, anyway, thank you. First item that I have on the agenda is Greenfield Crossing, Part Two, I'm recommending approval of the final plat, we have a letter of credit in the amount of fifty-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents.
So moved.
Motion approved by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you. The second item that I have on the agenda is Clover Valley, Phase One amended, and I'm just recommending approval of that amended plat, it did not change as far as the meat of the subdivision, this was a typo in the description about a range line, so I recommend approval of this amended plat.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Most approve, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Isn't this the one down in Steve's area?
Yeah.
That the road, the developer's going out to improve the road, something?
Improve the road, no.
Yeah, remember, we went through all that, and he was supposed to, went at the road, bring it all the way out.
Well, getting to his development, is that what you're talking about? Yes, sir, all that was done.
Okay.
Matter of fact, they purchased some additional, they had to purchase some additional property to have a right of way to bring that up to our standards to get to their subdivision.
Okay, but that's been done.
That's all been done.
Right, good deal.
Get the seat on it.
All right, and motion second, and any more discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you. The last item I have on the agenda is Melamie, Phase Two, we held the preliminary development conference, everyone seemed satisfied with this development, so I'm recommending approval of that preliminary plat.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
This was, this was brought to us, and it was a lot different than what we looked at this week. It put it more in line with Melamie, it maybe, a little higher, I'd say...
Scale.
Yeah, we've got a little bigger lots and a little bigger, maybe, square footage in the houses, and it fits now. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Fits well.
All right, I think who had the motion, had a motion by Morrow, second.
Bishop.
Bishop. Any more discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you, Slay.
Morning, gentlemen, under my section, item A is the resolution that Steve Eds was just visiting with you about, this is the intent resolution that does not obligate anything, but puts the public on notice that there is an intent on the part of the county to issue up to twenty-five million dollars in either GO bonds or development bank arrangement, either a loan or bonds that are sold to the bank. So, that's item A.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion to approve, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
In tandem with that is the resolution that's required as a part of that to hire necessary legal counsel to be associated with, affiliated with, and handle the issuance of the bonds at the point in time that this board decides to move forward.
So moved.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Item C is the consideration of and potential action to authorize the execution of an MOU between Rankin County and the City of Florence with respect to fire service protection that's being provided by the Florence Volunteer Fire Department. Florence VFD has a significant portion of the city of, inside the city of Florence, so there's an arrangement between both the city and the county to deal with certain issues that affect that department, one of which is the provision of a fire truck. Florence has agreed to pay half of the cost of the fire truck, and so that's, the MOU is simply to paper up that arrangement that we have with the municipality.
So moved. Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Item D is the, a matter to set a public hearing for January three, 2017, at nine a.m. for our storm water management program. We're required to hold a hearing for potential changes, amendments, suggestions, et cetera, the public has an opportunity to participate in the storm water management program. So, we need to set that hearing.
Second.
Most approve, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Item E is really nothing more than just cleaning up some paperwork. This is a state contract purchase that's being made by the sheriff, this is for in-camera deputy vehicle in-camera setups under the L-three system, that is a, that's an item that's on state contract. As a part of that purchase arrangement, there has to be a, in essence, there has to be a request from the county through the state ITS department for the purchase of these cameras under the state contract. cameras under the state contract. So, that's all we're trying to do here is to get authority from Ms. Laura to execute that requisition, so to speak.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Most approved, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
We've done this in the past. This is an effort on the part of the Mississippi Department of Transportation, item F here. DOT each year seeks federal funding under a grant program that's administered through the Federal Highway Traffic Safety Administration, and they are requesting that the county indicate their support for that effort to derive that grant. In years past, we have had, we didn't get this until just a few days ago. In the past, we've had time to actually get with Mississippi Department of Transportation and get written confirmation back from the gentleman that handles this process for DOT, written confirmation that the county is not binding itself to any financial commitment. Remember this, Jay? We said we would be glad to support as long as we're not obligating ourselves to spend money on something. And so, in the past, we've gotten that as a matter of routine practice. So, we set this one up to make your approval of our support contingent upon getting the written confirmation from DOT that there is no financial commitment.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Most approved, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Laura Oster.
Thank you. The first item I have this morning is authority to pay David Morrow, Jr. for the family master services for the months of November and December, and that's for twenty-five hundred each and to issue authority to a check each month. This will take us through the December order that we have.
Most approved.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. The next item is approval to renew our workers' compensation with Mississippi Public Employee Workers' Comp Trust for the year seventeen, eighteen, in the amount of two hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
So moved.
Most approved, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. The next item is authority to purchase three two thousand and fourteen U. Chevrolet Tahos from the Missouri Highway Patrol for the Sheriff's Department, funds of two, of nineteen thousand each, and Brett McAlpin, Billy Lord, Brian Whittington, and Steve Weaver will travel to pick them up and for us to pay any travel-related expenses.
So moved.
Most approved, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Additional business to be discussed?
I do have one item of additional business, and Brett Ishi should be here in a minute. Is he on his, he's on his way. We have been working for quite a few months now on cleaning up the insurance for the Lake Harbor fire truck that was wrecked back in April. Well, we have gotten, finally gotten the title of the vehicle into the county's name, so we're ready to proceed with turning that title over to them. We've received two checks already from them, one for twenty-four thousand, five forty-four, and the other for seventy-nine hundred. The full agreed value is sixty-two thousand. We will receive now, once we take care of this paperwork, that additional amount, which will be twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. It is my understanding, though, that Brett is working with somebody to salvage some of the equipment that was mounted on the truck. I don't, we don't know how much that amount is. He hasn't had a response from them yet. So, whatever that amount is, it will come out of this twenty-nine thousand, five fifty-five that we're due back. I was going to let Brett be here to, for y'all if you have any questions about why we need to salvage any of it, what they are salvaging from it.
I'll just leave it all to Daniel.
Salvage the tire, from the tires up, anything that's worth it.
And I don't know, at this point, we don't know how much that will reduce the amount that we are to get back.
Okay.
Without that being set, without knowing that amount, I will still need to probably by the twenty-ninth move forward on this. They've really been wanting to get the title and get it cleaned up, but like they...
Do we need to order something? We need to approve something today?
To order?
Yeah.
No.
All we need today is to authorize Ms. Laura to execute the power of attorney that confirms the title. Execute any documents associated with completing the insurance claim. And that would obviously include working with Brett to determine, and with the insurer to determine what the deduction or reduction of the balance owed will be as a result of what we rob off of the vehicle.
I make motion to add this item to the agenda.
Second.
Motion to add this item to the agenda by Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Do y'all want to hear from Brett since he's on the way up here about what? Are y'all satisfied that if they say they need the equipment, whatever's off of it?
Yeah, whatever we, yeah, whatever we get off of is good, so.
Okay.
Daniel was two pouts, and I didn't go wrong.
What'd he say?
Let him let you borrow his two pouts, and you go get what we need off of it.
Me and you strike out to and get it.
I've got an air hammer that we can use, too.
That'd be good, if we can use it.
All right.
I make motion to approve our county administrator following signing any documents needed for our fire truck.
Insurance claim.
Yeah. That.
Okay. Motion approved by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second, Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Okay. Well, we'll just turn Brett around.
I have something for additional business. I thought we were going to cover it, but it's not here. The last time we talked about white sands commodity and how we wanted to solicit that and put some language in there that if they're not providing us with what we've asked for within a certain number of days, that we can go to the next bidder. And we've got some stuff that we're two months behind, you know, and I'm telling people that Mike has put in a P.O. for it and it's coming and looked back, and that was September, asked Mike, and still hadn't sent it to us.
Do we have a second bidder on that? Bridgette?
Yes. On January third, we're going to award the new bids. Right now, it doesn't matter, and they are the low bidder on pea black, pea gravel, clay and watch gravel. What we decided to do is, we don't really have a lot of documentation at this point. When we issue that purchase order, give them two weeks to turn around, and if they don't, we'll go to the offer. There will be an offer in place.
It'd be our choice to go there.
We just need to document, and that way, if they can't haul within two weeks, we'll...
But you've gotten some more bids in, but we've got alternates to white sands, though, right?
Correct.
Right.
This time we do. Last time we didn't.
It's low.
They have to pay more to get the product.
Right. But it's our, our choice.
Yeah.
But if, yeah, if we're sitting there for sixty days...
White sands is giving us a runaround. I mean, I've heard the same reports back on the same thing. So, white sands is giving us a runaround on stuff, and we don't need to operate with them.
Well, that's what we're going to document this time, and but it should be an issue. They did not get the low bid on any of the limestone, just the wash, the clay gravel.
Okay.
But there will be alternates, so it should not be issued this time. Like I said initially, say two weeks, and then we'll avoid that purchase order and go to the offer.
Mike, can you talk to them to kind of maybe express to them our...
I would want to get everybody by a live board.
Another thing, gentlemen, that I have, I just received this morning, Rusty sent it to me. It's just an estimate from Curtis Communication on getting fiber to the unit system barn down there, and this is for single-mode fiber trenching boring.
From nine-one-one? Where's that going from?